I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for getting this going. I was asleep.
I'm going to silence.
Rule call.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Present.
Counselor Heising.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counsel President Stierz.
Here.
Counsel Tiarina.
Yeah.
We have six members present. We have a forum.
Approval of prior meeting minutes. I'll make a motion to approval.
I'll second. Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will say, Counsel President, those were some very well-written minutes. They were very well-written. I don't know who's responsible for writing those, but she did a very good job.
It wasn't me.
Okay.
I'm guessing it was Corinne.
Yes, it was.
Oh, you already knew that.
Thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
You can use that. You got brown stuff on your nose.
Committee as a whole, is there something?
Those are just the minutes that we approved.
Okay. Motion to approve the prior minute, meeting minutes? Or did we do that?
We did.
Yeah, alright. All in favor?
You part of a head. Steve, sit closer to him. I died through high school.
That's where you're at.
No, he's at the department heads.
No.
Yeah. Department heads.
Department heads report.
So, the fire department.
Thank you, chief. Throw us a life raft.
So, the fire departments look into in June, adding two full-time personnel that started out part-time and then lateraled in. So, we'll be doing a oath ceremony hopefully in June, just like we did the last time. And we'll have their families and stuff here for that. We just finished up a mandatory Medicare audit. Took a year to collect the data. It's taken us five months to assemble it and a lot of help came from Josie Delaney and Jamie downstairs. And Hannah, the executive assistant to the fire department, was key to putting that all together, so I really appreciate that. Reminder, the fireworks will be July 3rd of this year. It's a Monday. Other than that, I've been working with Scott Yoder from Fulton County's GIS to help get SOMA, the information it needs for our CAD system that we purchased. We're looking at going online hopefully in July, so that's exciting. Other than that, it was a busy weekend. It's very dry out, lots of open burning, lots of different calls related to that, so.
Was that Hannah's first time doing something like that?
It's the first time for it nationwide.
Oh, really?
We were, we are actually year two, but it was backed up due to COVID. So, we all went at the same time, so nobody really knew what, how the landscape laid on that whole deal.
Crazy.
And if you didn't do it, then you would face a reduction in your Medicare reimbursements.
Right.
And we didn't want that because that's solid revenue coming in, so. So, yeah, she did well. Lots of Zoom meetings, lots of questions, but lots of good help from downstairs, so.
Man, that's cool.
That it?
Yep.
Okay, here. Police Chief Kevin's not here. Director of Public Service, Keith Thurbeck.
Okay, other than what I gave you at the council hall, I also wanted to fill you in a little bit on the pool. We have sold 95 passes so far this year, had 2,725 daily entries into the pool. That's daily passes. And over 500 people going through the pool utilizing passes. And gross sales of $11,500 through the snack shack so far this year. And I think we only have two open dates for reservations yet for the pool.
One.
One?
Yeah.
Okay, we have one, so.
And I think it's past, actually, this weekend. July 1 was booked.
That was gonna be a lot.
No firsthand.
I thought all the prices on the snacks looked very reasonable.
Yes, we're trying to keep it as reasonable as possible, but still make a minor problem. We still have one slide that is down. We were hoping that the pump would be back this week. It still has not been returned. As soon as it is, we will get it up and running.
Is the parking holding out?
Yes.
With all those people?
There's, sometimes it's a little tough, but we do have that entire length of rear park that they can park in, so. We're doing good there. Working with Tom, we get the notice of commencement around for Get Us Paving, so as soon as we can get that and their blanket tax exemption to them, we should be able to get them in to start doing our milling fills on the streets that we have assigned to. That's it, unless you have any questions.
Director of Finance, Jamie?
I reported last Thursday that I got the financial statements turned into the Audit of State, that we were completed by our accountants and then provided the month-end reports to just a little bit ago. Our income tax revenue is still up 37% compared to where we were last year, so that's still pretty good. That's all I have.
Tom?
Not really much to report. I've been working with Phil pretty seriously on work with the York Township fire contract, and we're gonna be prepared to discuss that with you guys in the executive session. And I think the trustees, the honorable trustees from Clinton are here, and we'll be inviting them to participate in that executive session if council is so inclined. That's really, that's really all I've got to say this evening.
Thank you. Corinne, have anything?
No.
Committee reports, financial.
Finance committee met May 15th to discuss the monument cleaning in North Park. And everybody seemed to be in favor that that needed to be done. The cost is $13,222. Also, the monument in front of the fire department over here was going to be done at the same time for additional cost, $1,296. That will pretty much straighten up North Park. And Keith said that if we pass that this evening, that he can contact them. And it sounds like they'll be on the North Park issue pretty rapidly. Then Seneca Drive is where they're putting that new housing development roadway in. And the old connection points were not very good, so we have agreed to put up the $43,684, which would take care of, as long as they're paving the roadway, to extend it and meet the existing roadways and have it all look good and be done right. That was recommended by Counselor Heising, and I seconded that proposal as well. And then the fire department vehicle, we had this approved in the 2022 budget, but with like everything else with COVID, everything's backed up, getting the right price, the right needed stuff. We talked about it on May 15th, but then no action was taken. And then on May 26th, we had another meeting, and Chief Kessler explained everything again about the difficulty and that he's got a vehicle from Don's Automotive. It would be a great fit, but we would be needing extra money. And the difference is somewhere around $20,000. And the committee agreed that we ought to do this because we had approved it earlier. It's just that getting it is difficult and prices go up. The motion to approve this purchase was made by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by myself. All of us were in favor, and that was.
Do you want to just go ahead with the generator? Because that's the other thing right here.
How much was it?
Forty-three thousand.
Yeah. Do we have to do the recommendation on the vehicle?
I'm sorry, I had another page here. Thanks, sir.
I think you can proceed with the recommendation once he's done. Okay. Just a few more. Finish with that.
On June 1st, we met again to discuss replacing the current building generator, which I believe was from 1969 and obviously getting a little old. And estimated cost was, what, $117,000, I believe it was, something in that area. And they would come out and take care of doing everything. It was moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Chamberlain to go ahead with this. And all members of committee were in favor of it, so I think that is it. We spent a lot of money on this.
How much was 43,600?
Forty-three for, okay.
Forty-three is for the.
Forty-three, 684 was for the paving.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
So, do we have four recommendations or just the two that's on here?
It looks like you have one, two, three.
Couple, and then it skips and then comes back later, so.
So, I think you can either proceed with all the finance committee recommendations or if you want to go through A, B, and C, it's up to you guys.
I have no problem tackling all of them, just my opinion.
Yeah. I'm probably the best. So, recommendation for all four?
I'd make a recommendation to accept the finance committee recommendations.
I will second that. Motion to approve all of the finance committee's recommendations moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six Cs, zero NAs, motion carries.
Safety code report, Brandon.
So, this is about the golf carts and wanting to have them be legalized here in Waseon. We met and we talked about the, you know, difference of opinions and how I believe that I think it would be a good thing to have golf carts added as a benefit to living in Waseon. And we talked about, well, I guess I was in favor of it. Counselor Schneider was in favor of it. Chief said that he wasn't in favor because there would be possibly more calls that he would have to do and that type of stuff. And I know Keith is not in favor of it too, just because if there was an accident, they'd be gone, right? And so, we talked about limiting the different streets, taking away 35, taking away SHUB, not having it on SHUB. And so, putting strict restrictions on that, which I think would be definitely needed if we were to legalize it. And so, we talked about the surrounding city laws. And I think the one that we were closest to wanting to utilize was North Baltimore. They had a lot of, I guess, rules to it, which was nice. But, you know, Delta, Archibald, Napoleon, all these surrounding areas have golf carts legalized in their areas. And it doesn't seem like they've had too many issues. Some members of the city, I talked to other police chiefs and counties, and they had said that they didn't have any issues. They weren't getting a lot of calls against them or anything like that, so that made it nice too. So, we made a motion to recommend to legalize it, which was moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by myself. And then we all were in favor of it, and so now we're bringing it to council to see if we can make the first recommendation of it to legalize it upon then going back and setting up the rules and the restrictions. And then, once those are set, it would come back to council again to approve those things before it gets completely terminated or before it completely passes. So, it would be presented to council twice before it is actually legalized. And that was pretty much it there.
I, you know, just from my seat, I do respect greatly the opinions of our fire chief and our police chief in shaping, you know, how I sort of vote or how I legislate. And in this unique situation, our fire chief is, you know, for the golf carts. Our police chief is against the golf cart idea. So, it does, at least from my seat, put me in a little bit of a precarious situation, but I do appreciate both of their opinions. You did have some members of the public attend the committee meeting, right, Brandon?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
About how many do you feel, I mean?
There was like eight to 10, I think.
And they were all, they were all in favor of it?
Yeah. Yeah, we had nobody that was opposing that.
And they were not, they were not opposed to the fact that we would have to put restrictions on it and that if we wanted to, we could make it a six-month or a year trial period, knowing that if they, too many people were screwing up, we could rescind it and they'd lose everything. I mean, they were understanding as far as that goes.
So, you know, and kind of going back to the safety of it and, you know, people, trucks pushing up or whatever, getting behind them. It's like we've got, we have motorcycles on the road. We have bikes with batteries on them on the road that go up to 40 miles per hour, which is insane, just cool mountain bikes. We've got mopeds on the road where you're 14 years old cruising around on moped. So, I think it's just being extremely cognizant of other people is what you have to do. And the same with a motorcycle. It's like, it's not really the motorcycle's fault when he crashes. It's because somebody else was dumb and he wasn't paying, the motorcycle wasn't paying attention. And so, it, I think that, you know, there's, to claim of it could be blown up by a truck or something could be said about all vehicles, so.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, so I think it's just, you know, if you want to take the risk and do it, this is America. You've got that right.
I appreciated your question during committee of the whole, you know, the pros and cons. You know, I understand, like you described, you had a list of cons in your mind, and you wanted to hear pros, you know, and I appreciate it.
Have you come up with any more?
All I've come up with so far is the leisure aspect, so. But I appreciate that question that you had.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything?
Other discussion, I think if it's a golf cart on the golf course that a person lives out there and they got their golf clubs in it and they want to drive on the street to get to the golf course, I don't see a problem with that, but I think just to drive around town on a golf cart is not that acceptable. And with the accident that occurred about a month ago, where the bride was killed and people are injured, I think it's a bad thing to start. That's my opinion.
Where was that at?
South Carolina.
Yeah, there you go. She had a wedding dress on yet. Somebody ran into her in the back of the golf cart.
Man.
So, that'd be a bad thing to start in Waseon, I think. I don't see a problem if people live on the golf course and they want to drive the streets with their golf clubs to go to play golf, but other than that, people that have golf carts that golf have trailers for them to get there. I just think to drive around town for the heck of it is a bad thing to start. That's my opinion.
Right now, the way it sits, my understanding of where the city sits right now, golf carts on the road are not permitted, whether you have golf bags in the back or not.
Correct.
Yep.
That's what I understand. Is that right? Yes, that's what I thought.
Terry, do you have anything?
I just, I just feel like the weight of the burden placed upon all the drivers that come through our town, whether they're from here or not, the burden being placed upon them for the leisure desire of, you know, this small population, I, I'm not a fan. So, I mean, I, I don't want someone to not be able to have fun, but I think the, the risk for me doesn't, it doesn't read well. So, I mean, I know that I, we've discussed it and I have, you know, listed ad nauseam different, you know, issues that I have with it. And, you know, I still just don't see that the benefit outweighs the risks. When we have streets like Colton left, two lanes and diagonal reverse, you know, parking. And when you have streets like, busy streets going back and forth to the park like Lynnfoot and Atticue where it curves and it's really difficult to pass, I just think there are a lot of streets that would make it difficult. And I think with young drivers, and honestly, we have a lot of aging drivers that don't see very well, I think the burden placed on them to be careful.
She was looking.
Didn't name names, didn't name names.
Whoa, whoa, yeah, which I totally.
Are you talking about Ivan and Ivan?
And I appreciate that for sure, because it's like, you know, I was, I've been thinking about that too. And as I drove, I drove around Napoleon since I know that it's legal and it's been super nice out. So, I went to drive around Napoleon and I'm, and it's legal there, and I never once ran into it. Not literally ran into, but I never saw. I never saw.
I just tonight dropped a kid off in Pettisville to the ball field, and I had to watch out for, I mean, there was a girl still in elementary, and she drives her siblings, cousins around with a trailer on theirs. And, you know, the burden is on me to watch out for them.
Pettisville's unique in the sense that it thinks that no one else in the world exists.
But this idea that he.
They're driving their lawnmower down the street.
Right, they're driving lawnmowers. They've got a lot of things, which is totally fine.
The idea that we're, the idea that we're going to list all these restrictions and people are actually going to follow them, I think the burden placed on the police department and, you know, they have enough to do. So, I, I just think, you know, it's great that you would think that people would actually follow all of those restrictions, but I think humanity and the state of humanity kind of proves that that's not going to be the case.
Well, that's why we could put in, know that after six months or a year, we see it's not working, we can rescind it, you know, and put the burden on them to do what's right. And if they don't, take it away and say, hey, this is why we're taking it away. And those guys seem to understand that if their people didn't, didn't do it, they, they were respectful of the fact that they could lose that privilege.
Yeah. President?
Me? There's always that 10% of people that are in a concentrate. That's what our principal used to say, 10%. I'm not sure why he was looking at me.
You know, no matter the outcome, Brandon, you know, I appreciate the committee's work on the topic. I appreciate the public that came in and talked to the committee. This is a legislative process and it's at work and it's a good thing. So, no matter the outcome, what's happening is exactly right, so.
Anybody want a recommendation?
I make a recommendation. We accept the use of golf carts under certain restrictions that will be determined later.
I will second this.
That's the chair that brought the report? I guess so, right?
Recommendation that the use of golf carts be legalized in the city of Waseon subject to certain restrictions moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Tiarina. Any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
No.
Counselor Heising?
No.
Counselor Chamberlain?
No.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Motion, three A, zero NAs, motion does not carry.
I think it also can be brought up again, right?
The committee wants to make that recommendation. So, the president of council can't, normally the mayor can break ties. But per the juster's amendment to the, the charter, the council president sitting in as the mayor cannot vote twice and break ties.
Understand. So, you can bring it back up when the mayor gets back.
Yep.
Yeah, understand. Tree Commission, that's me. We met on May 25th on Thursday. It was just a meeting after we had our annual Tree City USA. And just kind of rehashed what went on. I mean, everything I think went great. Stephanie Miller informed the group that she received great feedback from the surrounding cities. I think everybody kicked in pretty good and did a nice job. That's all we talked about was our Tree USA annual meeting, so. And we did the two finances, right?
First reading, resolution 2023-7, a resolution to amend ordinance 2022-7, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the director of finance to increase or decrease certain line account appropriations within the various funds listed within the year of 2023.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Resolution to amend ordinance 2022-7, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the director of finance to increase or decrease certain line account appropriations within the various funds listed within the year of 2023 moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six Cs, zero NAs, motion carries.
Nothing under second reading and nothing under third reading, new business.
There's a motion to accept a public water system equipment grant.
I'll make that.
So, I'll, go ahead. I'll second it. Oh, here, okay, I didn't know.
Motion to accept the public water system equipment grant moved by Counselor Tiarina and seconded by Counsel, Counsel Stickley. Any discussion? Counselor Tiarina?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six Cs, zero NAs, motion carries.
Thank you.
Under old business, I have one thing. I just want to thank Keith and I want to thank Harold for putting the porta-pots at the different.
Yeah.
Keith did it. And they're putting places where you don't really see them that well. I mean, that was.
They're visible, but they're not.
Exactly.
If you're at the park, you can see them, but they're not necessarily, you know, standing.
Right from it, yeah.
Hopefully they'll be utilized. Yeah, well.
Yeah, my kids used them.
Did they?
Yeah.
Me being 60, I appreciate them.
Yeah, that was awesome.
I think it was well worth it for the residents of Waseon.
The one, I'm sorry.
They'll be able to utilize the parks more, I think.
Now, would, who, they maintain them every week?
The company maintains them on a weekly basis.
Okay.
The one thing I did notice, Keith, was, you know how they have the grass that they planted by those benches? When kids are running from the bench back into there, their feet are getting caught in that netting. And I didn't know if, like, there's something we could do to, like, tack it down or?
It is. We can try and tack it down a little bit better, but.
Okay, I mean, it is what it is at this point, but yeah, I just told my kids.
I had to be careful myself.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it'll catch your feet, but.
Is the grass growing under there? I mean, is it doing a good job?
As much as it can.
Yeah, well, exactly.
I guess, old business, one more thing. So, is, was it Bluebird, Early Bird?
Rainbird.
Rainbird, Wednesday Bird, baseball games. Did they come and look at it?
They will be out Wednesday to try and help us track down the short in the system. And then we may have to do some replacements on the actual equipment, the panel itself, to get that up and running. We're still utilizing manually right now.
So, is it in the budget to fix it without council approving something?
It depends what they're going to tell me as the price.
Cost factor.
As of right now, I think we probably can, as long as it's nothing major, too extravagant.
So, when you say manual, are they just turning the system on and off manually or do they actually have sprinklers that are moving around out there?
No, they're actually turning the system on.
That's what I wondered too. I was curious about that. Is this thing actually supposed to do it automatically?
Yes.
And shut off? Wouldn't flood the place. When will they be able to play on those fields?
About 30 minutes.
All right.
I did see it coming in. I think they're out there right now playing.
You could tell me they're utilizing them. They're pretty good shape. That's good. Anything else? Any old business?
No.
Prove over the bells?
Let's pay the bills. So, moved.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Council Schneider. Any discussion? Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council President Steeritz?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.
We want to go into executive session. Who do you want?
You need to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will move.
Second.
Motion to enter into executive session, moved by Council Heising and seconded by Council Stickley. Any discussion? Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Tiarena?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steeritz?
Yes.
Six A's, zero N's, motion carries.